Okay, good morning. Staff meeting Tuesday, May 14th. Four or five are here. Commissioners, Sarah Lopez. Commissioner Lopez is Mission Wichita. This is her last day of commitment, a long commitment of Mission Wichita, which she's been busy with. So she's got the last obligation there. A lot of people in the room to get to work. So, Manager Stoltz.
We have two items today. Anna Meyerhoff will go first. We wanted, we had told you a couple of weeks ago, we had done an employee engagement survey, and she's got some summary discussion on that. That should take a few minutes. But, and then the second part of the meeting is Nicole will step us through what's going to happen at the roundtable budget discussions with the community. We have an exercise to go through. And then Lindsay wants to hear, and I want to hear, some prioritization discussion on where the commission's at after, now since you've heard the entire budget, saw all the wants and needs, and anything we can get from you as we go through this exercise would be beneficial to staff. So that's the second part of the discussion today. So with that, we start with the survey.
Good morning, Commissioners. So in January of this year, the Division of Human Resources launched our engagement survey. So with the significant investments that you have made in compensation, what we need to do is make sure that we are appropriately managing our greatest asset, our workforce and all the components that impact their desire to perform their job and their commitment to stay with the county. So there's a few ways that we can measure engagement. Some of their metrics that you see, like turnover last week. We can look at employee performance with our new performance and goals module that launched this year. We'll be able to look at the performance of all employees collectively to make sure that all areas are functioning to meet expectations or higher. But then we can also do employee surveys to look at employees' overall satisfaction with their role, their supervisor, the department, and the organization overall. So we launched the survey and we have compiled the results. The survey was based on best practices and then it was created in partnership with IT, Chris Duncan, Senior ERP Business Analyst, got the survey launched and then developed this dashboard for us. So the survey was sent out to 2,832 employees. That was the number of employees we had at the time. 1,267 responded. That's 45% of our organization. You can see the demographics broken out and then you were handed a summary that's been created that will be sent out to all employees as well as this dashboard so they can see the results. But we can look at the information and just see how it compared to our actual organization. So does it mirror it? The survey was broken out into four key areas: culture, job satisfaction, involvement and belonging, and comp and benefits. You can see a results for all of these on the dashboard by going to the details page. But we'll walk through some of them. So for culture and on the survey overall, you'll see very high scores. The goal was, we were really looking for 80%, and most of the results were well over. So some of the areas for success in culture are like my supervisor supports my work and helps me succeed. 89.7% of the results were favorable. So when you see the green versus the red, the green means favorable. They, they replied with, they strongly agreed or agreed unfavorable would be disagree or strongly disagreed unless the answers based on how the question is asked needed to be switched. But favorable means there was the answers that we wanted. So the role of the supervisor is critical for strong employee engagement. So with us getting almost 90%, that means that our programs like the supervisor training series are working well. Supervisors have the skillsets they need to appropriately support their staff. We can drill into more of culture. If you jump to the like about county page. So employees were asked to give us one word or describe what they liked best about working for the county. So you can see the cloud here. You can also drill into the responses. So for example, we can click on teamwork. And then it'll show you the actual responses and how they were tagged to teamwork. So you'll get this and you can play with it all you want. We'll just walk through it today. There was a potential area for improvement in culture for Cedric County offers advancement within the organization. The responses were 78.5%. So close to the 80 we were wanting, but not quite. So there's some things that we can do. HRs will continue to look for areas that we can develop tiers if it's appropriate. Or we can also look at targeting promotional paths and really advertising to employees how that would work. For an example, an easy one would be administrative positions. Someone come in, can come in at a lower level administrative position, get the skills that they need and move throughout the organization and between departments. But we'll also advertise options that Human Resources has to help employees grow their skills or prepare to promote because it might not be within their department, but as long as we retain them and they can promote through the county, we consider that a great success. So we have options like our Mock It Till You Rocket program, which is a mock interview program. Employees can sit down with a member of HR and go through a mock interview and get feedback on how they performed. Our recruitment specialist, David Donovan, regularly talks to internal employees. And if they want to seek a new position or if there's a position that they know they want to have in the county, but they don't know what qualifications they need to work on developing, he can walk them through that. Or our learning library, which is part of our learning management system, has over 9,000 courses and a lot of those are in skills that employees need, like some advanced Excel courses and other software programs, leadership and supervisor classes that employees can take to get those skills to promote within the county. We'll skip compliments, benefits and come back to that. For job satisfaction, once again, the scores were overwhelmingly positive. We were very happy to see. The highlight of this area is I'm satisfied with the work I perform at 96.4%, which really shows that our employees are finding a lot of value and commitment into serving the public, which is a great thing for us to have and a great aspect for us to promote as being an employer of choice, the value that they get working here. So you can dive kind of more into job satisfaction by looking at describe your work. So here, once again, we asked employees to describe their work and you can see some of the words they chose. 59 told, said important. 60 said challenging. 47 said rewarding. And of course, 40 said busy, which sometimes that's a good thing. You want, you want to have a lot to do during the day. You can also look at reasons why they're choosing to continue with Cedric County. We were really excited to see 84% of employees said they see themselves working for Cedric County in the next five years. That's a large majority of the organization. That's a huge win for us based on the responses and those we sampled. But we also asked if they weren't going to stay. Why? The largest answer, of course, was retirements. And the next was better compensation. And then followed up by some of the smaller answers like job duties not aligning. And so that tells us that there's some departments that we might need to target on making sure that their job descriptions are updated, that they're giving a realistic job preview when they're hiring somebody. And then what are the three factors most important to continued employment at the county? Of course, number one is compensation with almost 1,000 responses. But followed up by that was work environment, benefits, and the enjoyment of the work that they perform. We did also have an area on job satisfaction that we see as an area for improvement. 79.5% of respondents said that they believe that their workload is reasonable for the position. We, of course, would have liked to see that over 80. So that does tell us that there are some areas that we need to look at based on results by department to see if there's a staffing analysis that needs to be conducted to make sure. But also, as we continue to fill vacancies, employees will continue to feel like the workload can be spread more and have a little bit more of that work-life balance that they're seeking. For involvement and belonging, every area we consider an area of success. They were all over 80%, which is very exciting. Especially, it seems simple, but I have a friend at work. That's one of the most significant markers when you look at best practices for engagement for employees to feel included and that they belong in their organization is that they have that peer when they come to work that makes them feel like they have that support that they need. And then finally, of course, compensation and benefits. Well, you know, we'd always love to see them at 80% for being paid a local mortgage. We know that that's not realistic. But for 58.2%, that really shows the work that has been done in the last three years. It's been a long time since the county did a survey, but everybody can remember in the old surveys that this score was always very low. And so we're really excited to see that over half of the respondents believe that they are being paid fairly to the local market. And of course, we'll continue to make improvements through each budget cycle. We also asked them if they felt like the county was committed to continuing to improve compensation and overwhelmingly more than the majority, at 77.4% of employees said that they felt like there was a commitment to improving compensation. Employees are paying attention. They're thankful for the increases that they have. And I think that has a huge impact on the scores that we saw about them staying for another five years is that they see the commitment that we are making to ensuring that they have the compensation that they need to continue to performing their work. And you can see, we asked just how well they thought that the county has addressed compensation over the last three years. And 69% of employees thinks that, think that we have addressed it very well or somewhat well in the last three years, which I think again is a really strong indicator of all of the work that has been done. Outside of engagement, we did ask a few questions based on some initiatives or some other considerations that have been made or discussed lately. We asked about how often employees are using bilingual skills while they're performing their jobs. Of the respondents, 30 employees said they are using it daily, 13 weekly and 12 monthly. With this information, we're better informed to start discussing how many employees we actually believe may qualify for bilingual pay. And so we'll be able to present better estimates on what a program like that would cost the county. We asked, also asked about training. Giving employees the opportunity for growth and learning development is critical to retaining them, but also making sure that they have what they need to improve the skills to continue to perform their work well. Employees, we asked what types of training and they are interested in all of the options, but that's good. We know that we need to present diverse coursework for our employees. And of the types of trains they're interested, the highest were instructor-led and on-demand video. So that'll help us target our funding for employee development on focusing on those two areas. But overwhelming, very positive survey. We were really excited with the response rate as well as the responses that we got. Our intention is to start doing this annually so we can look at year-over-year improvements. And if we see any declines, granted, these are really high numbers. I'm really excited that we get to start high, but if we start seeing areas slip, then we know that that's something that we need to address.
Okay, that's a lot of great data on there. I appreciate the work that went into the survey. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, this, this is really good. Thank you for doing this. Just if you're gonna do this annually, with the recent happenings, can you add a question about are they aware of cybersecurity threats? And maybe who's your favorite commissioner?
One to five.
I don't think it's a good idea.
On the question regarding bilingual skill, did every respondent answer that question? Was that something people who, I mean, a lot of employees probably never use bilingual.
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I tried to interpret the question. So is this a
So we asked
need for it, or they actually did something in some other language? Please explain this a little bit further.
So we asked them, do you use a language other than English when performing your work? Yes or no? And if they answered yes, then these two questions came up.
So how many people in the 1267 were answering these two questions? 73? You have to add that up, it looks like. Was it number 115? So then you, again, so you break that down, for example.
The majority was Spanish.
So they say 115 answered both questions?
Yes.
They're back to Spanish again, so about 50% of the 66. Okay. All right. Then another, just another observation here, but the tenure on the sheet that you handed out, we don't have, we don't have all this data that you're showing today. You don't, we don't have that in front of us today. But we do have kind of a summary sheet here. And I noticed that tenure, less than five years total is 56.1%. We have a very new organization, you know, nearly 3,000 employees, but more than half of them have been here less than five years.
Yes.
It would be, again, I think doing this survey year after year would be very helpful because they'll let you know, I think with unemployment being a little unusual right now, meaning that it's lower than usual, right? I think these employees have a lot of choices where to go. And so again, we've, we've tried to keep them here and recruit them by increasing salary and benefits. But in other years, let's say five years ago, when unemployment was much higher, for example, we may not have been as competitive on salary, but again, unemployment was higher. So it was, there was less competition for those employees. So again, I think to, to track that unemployment and unemployment versus these numbers would be, would be really useful. And then the second of all, this, the second column on the right here, for example, you say gender male is 44.99%, female is 55.1. I assume this represents the 100% of our entire organization.
Yes.
Right? So you're saying right now we have 2.27% Asian, 8.49% black, I don't know how it goes, 75.8% white?
The second column percent of organization would have been on the date that the survey launched. So this was the demographics of our organization on January 22nd.
But that's the full organization, 100%, whether they responded or not. That column represents our demographics of Central County.
Yeah. So it gives you a comparative just to see how close for survey respondents did it, did it look compared to our actual organization?
Does anybody have a way to connect that to the, the, I'm not so sure. And one other point I would make out here is the, the, the age of our employees. I don't know how well that matches what happens in the, in the private sector or not, but these, these are not even bins of distribution. We have eight years in the first one, five in the next three, then I would say, you know, 20 to 30 years in the top bin there. So it's hard to know, you know, that's one, that's one way to look at the county's age demographics, the race demographics. It might be nice to say, how does that compare to the Central County as a whole? For the workforce of the Central County. To me, I'm interested in seeing how do we line up with what Central County, you know, you know, generally speaking, male and female are 50/50 across most, again, we're a little bit heavy on the female side, for example. It'd be nice to know, are we, are we more, do we have some kind of skew in terms of race in Central County? Because DEI keeps coming up. And if I'm looking at DEI, I think actually we are maybe more minority based than we are, if you compare us to Central County as a whole. And that may be off in my understanding of that, but so I want to just compare how, what is our makeup compared to the county itself?
Yeah, we can get you that data.
Thank you.
Other questions on the survey? It's good. Lot of really good information on here. Okay, thank you.
Okay, Nicole, we have some handouts coming around for commission and start talking about budget here.
There's actually budget tiers in the budget.
This one page?
Yeah, one page. Nicole, are you ready? Yeah, yeah. Well, Nicole's getting the presentation up. The piece of paper that you've got is kind of the outline for the roundtable discussion. The first one is set for May 20 and then there's one the first week of June, I think June 4th, I think. And it's going to, if we look at the top where it says public group presentation, that's just kind of how we're going to kick these sessions off. We will not do that today because I know all of you at your cab meetings and in public have talked about the county generally, but a lot of the citizenry doesn't understand the role of county government versus city government. So we're going to spend a little bit of time and get people up to speed on what the role of the county is, how we are directly conduited to the state. We'll give an overview of our county services and our administrative functions. Then Lauren will give them what she gave you in budget hearings, which is current financial situation and you know, some capital improvement projects moving on. And then she'll also, her and Lindsay will tag team the economic outlook and what deficits we are facing for the next three to five years. So they, the community will get what you guys have gotten in the, in the budget hearings. And then it, and then after that overview is done, and I, you know, I think that's, you know, we're going to try to keep that at about a half hour. We don't want to inundate people with that because we really want to get to the second part of this, which is small group exercise. And depending on how many people we have show up, the community meeting, we'll split them into manageable work groups and we'll have staff there at each table to facilitate that discussion. And that's where we begin to get into the weeds of prioritization and what the community wants us to spend our budget money on. So we'll have a time for a small group discussion. Then we bring them all back together in the large group discussion. And part of what Nicole will show you today is the exercise. We'll put them through where they use their cell phones or we have an alternative method for somebody that doesn't maybe have a smartphone to take part in some drill down types of survey work to determine prioritization. So Nicole, I'm going to turn it over to you and you just tell me, we'll tag team this to some degree, but kind of, I think I hit the high points on what we're going to present and maybe take us to the next step.
Yes, sir.
You're hitting the, the high points at the beginning. Are you going to show what Lindsay shows us that the cost of governments in Central County is? They find, you know, and you've got that line on the big sheet.
The price of government?
Yeah, the price of government.
Yeah, we can show them any, anything you all would like us to.
Eye-opening. So what the price of government in Central County is.
Also, one purpose of this is it gives you a chance to look at what we're going to present to the community. If you see something you want presented to say, and we'll write it down and we'll add that to the presentation. So we want you to kind of critique this as you go through too. Okay.
Okay, thank you for the intro. One thing I wanted to show that is the new this year, we put an actual budget process page on our website. You can find it under the Division of Finance and Budget. And it goes through budget workshops. It goes through our hearings. You can click on those links and see the recordings or the streams of those. We've added the dates for the roundtable discussions. When online public comment, comment is open, that will be added here as well, along with advertised and other places. Upcoming budget meetings through the rest of the process. And then it also gives a quick five-step of how we do our budget process. So this is very clear to the community what we do and how we go through our budget process. Tom gave a great overview of what our plan is for the roundtable sessions. Again, we'll have that presentation that gives a basic intro of what county government is. We'll break into the small groups with facilitated questions to help folks understand, answer their questions and kind of guide us to the group feedback, which I wanted to give you an opportunity to test today or preview. So we are going to use a tool, a tool called Poll Everywhere. And the way it works is you have the opportunity to either type in the link up here or easily scan the QR code and it will show up on your phone. So if you want to go along, that would be great.
Anybody in the room?
Anybody in the room. Now, to be clear, this is in test mode, so none of this data specifically will be saved. We will clear it after it. So when we get to the roundtable discussions, we will have that as a clear slate. I'll give you guys just a few more moments to get connected. When it's connected, it should be a black screen that pops up that says, welcome to Poll Everywhere. And your survey should be starting soon or it hasn't been started yet.
So when Nicole and I were tinkering with this yesterday, Nicole did the code and I did the manual login. You get same screen, your results still get recorded the same. So either way, I'm wondering if this is might be a little bit clunky out in the field. I mean, if
We can, we can save this QR code and have it as an intro before we get there. It's
What happened?
Oh, folks are already answering questions. They're getting excited. So for those of you that have received it and the poll is open, at this point in the presentation or the feedback process, the community has, the community has received the presentation. They've had small group slash one-on-one conversation to dive deeper, but then now we are recording what they learned from the presentation. While there's some very interesting feedback here, again, we're not going to keep any of this because, well, no. So. Well, now that you've had your fun, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next question. But just to be clear, the first one is we wanted to give the, the room an opportunity to share their aha moment of what they learned about the budget that they didn't realize before. So our next question is about characteristics that you feel best align with Cedric County. Again, this will show up on your phone and give you a list and you get to choose. Number 46. It should tell you how many you should be able to choose. Oh yes, this is a ranking. Thank you. This is a ranking. So you'll be able to order them how you want. If you click on it, there should be arrows that go up or show an up or down arrow, and then you could put them in your order of preference. Apologies. Give you guys just a few more moments. One of, of course, one of my favorite things about this is that you can see this live. And so everyone in the room could see kind of where we're landing, what we're doing. It is completely anonymous. We don't keep, there's no way to share name, phone number, address, any of that. You literally log in and take the survey. All right, everybody ready to go to the next question? Okay, here we go. Now this one, you get the opportunity to choose six, and these are the services that you feel are done well by Cedric County Government. One thing I do want Just choose six, correct. I did want to point out that you'll see that county public safety responders, which is EMS, fire and 911 are separate from public safety management, which falls back to our conversations of state responsibilities with the state tells us we have to do or we need to do with our budget monies and then what county responsibilities are. So that one you'll see separated. Yes, it will say, thanks for playing, but no. Yes, it will say, thanks for playing, but no.
It's what we do well.
Yes. Yeah, at the very top, if you scroll up above where you're responding, you also see the survey too. Yes.
You don't hit submit on this. You just push buttons and it goes.
Yes, just for everyone, the question was, you don't actually have to hit submit. Once you click your item, it automatically feeds in. And there is an opportunity, if you fat finger one and you didn't want to choose it, you can change your answers too.
Hope you can explain the picture of the percentage of out for the right.
Yes. So the percentages you'll see on the right have all, they're different all the way through. So the way that works is at this time, if we had one person respond and they did one item, it would be a hundred percent. That's the response. And then as more people give feedback, the response and the percentages change accordingly to better reflect the group. Does that make sense? Okay. Last call for feedback. Yes.
Take your brain shot.
I just did. My phone.
There you go.
I mean, we can always save this, but there was no intentions to. Okay, sure. We can save it. Yes. Oh no, those are starred out at the top. All right, we're going to go ahead and move on to the next question. Okay, so the next one is choose six services that you see opportunities to better focus on core services. And this is basically what are, what do you see areas for improvement?
Better focus on core service. Does that mean this isn't really core services?
Yes, we can. Yes.
I'm interpreting it that way.
Yes.
What's not a core?
What's not a core?
Yes. And if this isn't the way you want to ask this question to the community, that's fine. We can also change it to where do we need or where do we see areas of improvement? That is covered in the small group conversation, so it's not necessarily recorded in this data. But it would be recorded in the small group time, but this is specifically about core services. It's just a very hot topic of the commission right now.
So I'm looking at this, what am I, what is a core? What's not a core?
Correct. What is? Yes, and that's fine.
And if it's not core service, I would say limited maybe three. Yeah.
So, so the next question is a your top three priorities for our budget, and it has the same group of folks, but to focus on this specifically, we're wanting to say that what do you classify is a core service? Or what is not?
It's the or I find it beautiful.
But I think if you're going to say what is a core service, then I think it's four.
Yeah, I think if you say what is a core service, then I think six or greater number is appropriate. If you say what is not, I might reduce in that way. Let's change this and say that what is, what do you not see, what is not a core?
And limit it to three. Yep, we can do that. Thank you for that feedback.
Some of this stuff really doesn't belong on the slide. I mean, who doesn't think that EMS and nine-one-one is a core service? I mean, do we want to ask the question? I mean.
Right. And so again, the reason that these groupings or these topics were picked was going through what at the state is required services of us. And then at the county, what we do as services and then also the et cetera, what we have classified as et cetera services, the things that we make, what is great about Sedgwick County.
My, they're answering these questions of what it's not after they get the preview of what county government is. They may be educated first. That's going to be the goal of first. And then, and then what inspired it was to.
Yes. Is this is, I mean, to follow up on that too, the, this is also broken down on state statute. So we're required to do clerk, register of deeds, the appraiser, district attorney, those kinds of things. And then as it goes down, our county services. Yes. Okay, everybody ready to go to the next one? All right. So the next one is limited to three and it's what are your top three priorities for Sedgwick County budget?
So when, just while you're filling this out, when you create people, it's risk. Because sometimes they say things that you may not agree with. So that's where now it's lived with us going forward in the budget process. So we will, we will refer to this as staff when we're building the budget on what the community's having in this meeting.
So there's, there's an impetus to try to get as many people to this meeting as we can. If this is going to be something that we're using for statistical data.
I also interpret this. I also interpret this two different ways. I mean, just because it's on this list doesn't mean we want to spend money or, or reduce funding. I mean, it's a priority to discuss it, but doesn't mean that you want to, what do you want to do with this topic? You know, is it on the list there because you want to spend more or you want to spend less? I mean, I should see all the property taxes on that. I see that under the assessment, but tax collection is kind of getting close to the idea of property taxes. And if you said on there reduced property taxes, if that, if that was worded that way, what's the priority? Reduced property taxes. It would be the top of the list.
The intention of this question and slide is more of should we be spending, basically should we allocate more services towards emergency management? Should it be more towards community corrections, public health services? It's a it's a snapshot for the folks that are in the room to try and tell you what the community feels is their priorities for Sedgwick County budget.
More spending or more, more services, more spending or something.
Yes, and adjusting priorities.
You might just add a word at the end of government budget and just add resources. What are your top three priorities for Sedgwick County government budget resources? If that's what you're trying to get at, so that they're very clear that where are we going to allocate resources?
This room and folks behind you that are participating, yes.
But let's see, I'll question, I enjoy the business, how do you want to spend?
Yes. Okay, we have one more question. Ready to move? Okay. Now this one is another ranking and these are hot topics that have been discussed through the budget process. And we wanted to take the opportunity to let the community comment or give feedback on what they feel is their priority. And those include homelessness, functional consolidation opportunities, community corrections, mental health, defining core services and engagement with the community. Yes, and to Tom's point where he said, this is more or less in draft mode. I mean, if we decided that this is the way we wanted it, we can present it today, but if you have feedback and changes or additions, please let us know.
See, I, I'm sorry, I, I like you, for example, even the phrase functional consolidation opportunities. To me, if there's not better services, less cost to the taxpayer or some kind of streamlining that happens, some efficiency that happens as a consequence, then it doesn't, it's not interesting to me. It's only interesting if it becomes more efficient, more effective, better services, less cost.
You can vote it now?
Well, my point is, but the fact is on this list here, the caveat is I'll only vote for it if it creates efficiency.
Yeah.
I don't want to vote for it just because change in government is not valuable unless it provides those
Right.
those, those goals. So.
I, I think an interesting question on here would be reduction of property taxes. I mean, for me personally, this is what I hear more than anything else from my constituents is property tax, property tax, property tax. I would be interested in knowing if that is, after all they've learned up to this point of the last slide of the survey, if they still feel that property tax reduction is still an emphasis.
I would, and I would add to that, please suggest three places that you think we should reduce spending.
So that's actually a perfect lead in to the other piece that I was going to show you today. We last year purchased a license for a budget simulator and we used it internally to rank what was on the recommended budget. And this year, if everybody's finished on this one, I'll move on to the next. Yes.
Think the result of this slide, it may I think we all understand functional consolidation, I agree, except for the economic or efficiency, we should mention that. But I think there are that property tax question that we're going to ask, but this is the slide to ask.
Right.
And Tim was perjury here that we're going to discuss. I'm sure it might be a little too busy, but people are going to discuss an alternative method to finance ultra-impulse using sales stats, that's property technical. Can we should learn something in that?
That's a tough one. I think that is the wordiness. I would love to know that obviously, but I just asking on a survey, I think might be challenging.
I want to show you the next.
I think one more thing before we go.
Sure.
The fact is, we're not spending money from Sedgwick County on homelessness right now. So if, if the fact this is on here, it presumes to the, the knowledge of the respondents is, they would have to know we're not doing this now. You're asking us to start spending money when we're currently not spending. The fact that it's on the list and kind of moving towards the top of the list, I mean, it may be important to the people. Are they asking Sedgwick County to solve this problem? Are they asking the cities to solve the problem? I don't know that we ought to encourage them to to get more confused. I think, I think it's confusing enough for lots of people. We are focused on pieces and parts of the social challenges of the community, but homelessness is not our, is not, is not our issue that we're focused on as a county. Cities are, we're focused on, on mental health. But anyway, anyway, the fact that this is on the list, in my opinion, actually creates even more confusion.
It's an issue, correct. And it comes up a lot in conversations and we do have leadership and elected officials that are involved in the process. So it's more of a, and again, this is a survey. We're able to take the feedback, digest it and use that as tools to make decisions. We don't have to take this as this is how we have to act.
And I would, I would add that if homelessness was a top, one of the top tiers, it would let us focus on our messaging to the public that, hey, the separation of our, where do we fit in, in the homeless?
In our lane in that conversation via calm care and comforter house.
I would add that on functional consolidation, I'd say add somewhere in between one of those words, city, county. Because people don't, I didn't understand what functional consolidation meant.
The grammar?
Cities, maybe cities, county.
If you took the word Sedgwick County service out of that, simply this question, these are all.
But it's, but it's for the budget. I mean, the, the whole point is to talk about budgets. So I really am, if that's what we're going to use this for, I'm uncomfortable with that.
Maybe instead of, or recommendation wasn't, maybe instead of services, we do issues. Sedgwick County issues. It's a little more generic and it doesn't necessarily reflect exact services that we're giving.
Prices of social phenomena, we're all state, county, city, nonprofits, churches, we're all trying to figure it out. So in fact, the element we're not giving, I do see your point that it's not a, it's not our loan, our loan issue, whereas that's what's confused, that is, I don't know, this is like community corrections, third aid, communication.
Well, I think if it's, if this is truly about budget, it needs to be things that I think the commission is willing to talk about from a budgetary perspective and whether that's homelessness. I mean, I get your point, but we just spent $200,000 on an emergency winter shelter.
And we also have the housing first program that was just funded two weeks ago.
But.
We do have a housing department and cost care. So I mean, we are very, we do fund homelessness. We just, two weeks ago, took a vote on the housing first grant out of the general fund. So I mean, it's, we do fund it. And it is a community issue and I, I take it as an opportunity to let people know what the county's role in this space is, which is the mental health and substance use and what we do via calm care. I think that's an opportunity to really say, we're engaged in this space through our, through our lane.
So what that could look like is where it says homelessness, then in parentheses beside it, it could say calm care, housing first, you know, what our role is that we currently have in it.
Yeah, I just think you can really delineate at that point. I mean, I, I was in Central County issues, I think actually is a little bit more aligned with what we're doing on this slide.
Yes.
I don't think the public knows what housing first and most of them don't even know what calm care is.
Sure.
And that and they don't know what community corrections is either. I mean, the vast majority of the population doesn't know. Most of those things up there, people are not going to have a good understanding of what they are and what the county does with them. So again, it's an education opportunity.
Exactly. Thank you, Tim.
So do we keep this in and use it as an educational opportunity? So when we roll to this slide, there's going to need to be some qualification made, or we add qualifications into this while we have them in our small roundtable.
Correct.
I, I think both are opportunities there. Yeah.
Can I ask also the, the idea of engagement with the community? There has to be some kind of understanding exactly what's being out there now. I have people today who say, I have no idea. Do you have a website? That there's a newsletter that you have the, I have four events per month where I'm actually sitting at the table saying, let's talk. And people, I had one last night, four people showed up. I've got a hundred and twenty-five thousand people in my district and four people show up to a coffee. At the end of the day, I'm doing engagement with the community, but they don't know that.
Sure.
So I, I feel, I feel like it's almost unfair them to say, oh, I think that's a much bigger problem. We need to deal with that. And they have no idea what, we have no idea what's actually being offered to them today. So if you're going to have that on the slide, you almost need to say, are maybe, are you, maybe another question is, are you aware of these things? Yes or no?
Right.
Or, or how much awareness do you have of community engagement? And have them answer that question first, because I almost feel like this is unfair. To say we're, it almost highlights it as a problem, when maybe the problem, the problem is they just don't know what's out there.
And you're speaking to the communications department who deals with this every single day. So I completely agree and understand with what you're saying. The vision for at least including this was if the community doesn't feel like what we're doing now is giving them the engagement and understanding they're looking for, then it will give us opportunities to think outside the box for new ways to try and connect with them. That, that's what I envisioned for engagement with the community. So I agree with you. We communicate all day long. We have many forms and fashions of how we communicate. But there's always areas for improvement. And if this is not meeting the needs of our community, then we need to look at other ways to do that.
I guess I would say I would challenge any elected official in any place around there to say, what do they do that's more than what we're doing here?
Sure.
I just don't, I don't know what else we can do. So we're already doing everything we can think of. And the challenge, I think, is the public just either doesn't have a, they're busy, they're not, they're, maybe they're content.
Right.
And they don't see, they're, they have no complaint to come talk about. So, you know, I interpret that saying they had the opportunity, they knew about it, but they chose not to come. They must be happy. So there, there's that, that side of this. But at the end of the day, I don't know that you know, for example, we have our budget meetings and a few people show up. How do you interpret that? Does it mean that they're not interested? Or they didn't know about it? Which is it? I, I think we have to understand that more deeply before we start asking them to tell us there's a problem. But maybe the, the problem is they just don't know about stuff.
I, I would agree. I, I think when we get to this slide, I think maybe taking some time to set up the slide a bit and to talk about the issues would be helpful. Whatever setting that's done in and with the way I interpret the engagement with the community and correct me if I'm wrong, if this wasn't your intent, but the big conversation on the city of Wichita is, and they talk about it frequently, it's transparency, transparency, transparency. And I think sometimes we get linked into that conversation inadvertently. So I don't know if that's what you're trying to get at there with engagement, community that, or not, but I just think setting up each sub item might be helpful.
Being a constituent of Sedgwick County and obviously working here, I feel that we are very transparent and I am biased because I am part of that. But that was, transparency was not my intent. My intent was, as I was sharing with Commissioner. Um, but that was transparent was not my intent. My intent was, as I was sharing with Commissioner Howell, was. If folks don't feel like we're getting information to them that they can or that to understand or getting to them and reaching them in their busy lives. Then what are ways that we can reach outside of or do something different? Whether it's text messages, is it? I mean, we've, we've tried a mobile app in the past and it did not go well. And so we have, do we need to relook at what we're doing with that? And so those are. That was the vision that I had when I put that on there.
But and this is a ranking thing. So all these are important, but we're fortunate people to from most of these. And this would tell me, how did we, how are we, how should we spend our time?
Yes.
And should we spend our time really trying to drill down on core services? Should we spend our time on figuring out better ways to engage and communicate with the media? I mean, whatever ends up in the top two or three, I think we have to focus on it's a, this gives us guidance on how to manage.
But I do want to point out, this is for budget, right? This is for budget conversations. And so I respect what we're saying here, that it's a way to get feedback from the community. But we're talking about assigning resources and I get the point about time. But I think all of this in first, except for core services is that we're going to do something new and different. And and I don't know that that's also a realistic expectation to set. With the budget that we have today, if the goal is to focus on compensation and the goal is to reduce property taxes, that honestly, and we're we're already facing a structural imbalance. I don't know where that leaves us with doing extra.
It leaves us with knowing where the community stands. I mean, I mean, I I think there's a lot of value in that, whether we can practically accomplish them or not. At least we have a feeling and they have a say in where the resources. Um, and then we are held accountable to those conversations at that point.
The also vision that I had with this too was to start leading the conversations to reevaluating our strategic plan when the time was ready.
And and that's, I guess, where I was thinking, maybe if if that's what we're hoping to get here is knowing that we have to refresh the strategic plan. Cause it was a five year plan when it was adopted in 2019. Is that a better opportunity to have this greater discussion outside of a 2025 budget conversation? I don't know.
We'll work on the budget. And the title of this thing says, what are the important things services Cedric County should provide? We don't provide homeless services generally. We provide a lot of other things. We get people coming to our board meetings all the time, talking about aging, but we don't have that up there. Uh, we have a lot of things that we're doing that are county services. I'd get rid of everything that's not a county service on here. And I don't think community corrections is one of the most important things that we do to ask that question. Uh, so, uh, this whole slide needs to be revamped, in my opinion. If we're we're focusing on county services. That we have to look at in the next two years, we got to look at what services that we actually provide. And make sure that that is what we're asking the community on.
Right?
Cause we'll, we'll work on this slide.
Yeah. We'll work on the sign. I think this whole tool is really unique and interesting. I'm looking forward to it.
Thank you.
Might just think about for your chat meetings and.
Oh, yeah.
It's like tool that.
So the other piece that I wanted, or I started to lead into that has that will touch point some of the comments and conversation that we've had. Um, we did purchase the budget simulator last year and we used it for ranking. And we have purchased it again for this year with the intentions of going public with it. The way we are looking at doing it is what I would classify as more of a budget challenge. And so here's an example of what that would look like. We haven't determined what our numbers would be and what it would exactly look like for Cedric County. So that's why I gave you an example to see how it works and what the process could be. So this one specifically goes into. Um. Basically, these are your total expenses. This one has your overspend, the percentage in the budget, and the goal of it is to find. To get community feedback on where they think that we can either shift budget or what we can do to resolve budgets. So. Tying back into property tax, do we reduce property tax? If we reduce property tax, what does that look like in other areas? If we go the sales tax route for cultural arts, we add that in. So then how does that shift and balance the budget? And this gives you that visual. To do that. So I'm just going to click through. Again, these are all just samples. It's not what Cedric County is doing. But if we do this, then how does it affect the percentages and the overall expenses at the top? So if we're not going to do this, or we are going to do this. So just based on those two alone, in this sample, I've balanced the budget. So you can go through and you see how the numbers change. You can choose how it's affected. And you see at the top how it all balances out. So if this is something that we want to look at doing. To get feedback for property taxes, for sales tax. And specific areas as a whole of the county we want to look at, this is an opportunity for us to do that. To my understanding, the city of Wichita does a simulator like this um, as well. They have the same product, but again, this service offers a ranking, which is what we did last year compared to this actual budget challenge. Where we give them a number and we say, help us figure out what you would do if you were in our shoes. I bring this up to you because, um, again, this is another opportunity for feedback. And also if we want to include this in the budget process, we need to start talking about it now so that we can figure out where it will fall in the timeline and how it can best. Give you feedback that you want or need to make decisions this year.
Are you considering doing this at the budget meeting?
Uh, there's not time to turn this for the May 20 budget round tables, but. As we get closer to recommended budget, um, or through that feedback process, this can be an opportunity for.
That's what I was asking. It just felt like maybe we probably wouldn't have time to get into something on this level at the budget meeting.
I might be able to turn it, turn it for the beginning of June, but I don't want to. I don't want to promise something that I can't turn.
No, 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 I'm, I wouldn't.
It would be a lot of work on the budget team and for leadership and. To be able to come down to numbers and I would definitely want to run those, make sure you guys are okay with what that looks like before we put it out to the public.
Agreed. Yeah. Any questions? It's good stuff.
Budget round table.
Yes. Yes. So I'll run through that schedule for you. Um, let me pull this back up. So it's on the screen as well. So budget round table discussions is Monday, May 20th, and this will be at NCAT on Web Road. From 5:30 to 7:30. And then we have a second one on June 4th. It's that's a Tuesday, same time, 5:30 to 7:30, but this will actually be at Campus High School. And anyone is welcome to come. We have specifically invited advisory board members. So anyone that you all have approved to be on an advisory board has been invited, newsletter subscribers. Um, we do have this out on social media and plan to have this out on our website as well. So it is open to the public. The way that this was designed was that this would be a staff led endeavor so that we could produce data and feedback. For not only the county manager as he makes his recommendations or makes his recommended budget. But also for you to hear. So I would say you're not active. Participants, you are listeners in that, at least that was the vision, but of course. We can discuss accordingly.
Yeah. 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 Tom.
Well, we have.
Thank you, Nicole.
Patient, I do want to open up. I do want to open up the conversation since you've heard all budget hearings. Um. Is there anything? Is there any takeaways that you have from the last two weeks that we want to talk about in here today? And we'll take notes and give an opportunity. Lindsay, or anything else I should ask her?
Traditionally, you've had about an hour at the end of your hearings to talk and because we moved CIP, you didn't have that opportunity this year. And so what we would like is feedback on, are there priorities you've heard from decision packages? Are there priorities you've heard from the CIP presentations? Are there directions or anything you want to give us related to property tax? Um, keeping in mind that we do have a structural imbalance. Uh, that we know is at least 5 million, um, going into the next couple of years. So. What we would like to understand from you all is, do you have the information you think you need right now? Or recognizing that we're also going to have a compensation workshop and there's going to be some follow up discussion on a couple of those CIPs we talked about last week's. Uh, sirens and the juvenile campus. Um, obviously, we're still going to have a lot of conversation, I think, about an admin building. But we just need, I think, to start having some public discussion with you all about what are your priorities for this budget? What do you want to see? What do you not see?
Okay. Well, let's fire away. I I guess I got one question. What is the, um, remind me, what's one mil of property tax in 2025's budget? What are we building it on?
That is worth, whoa, sorry, I can. I didn't bring my glasses with me and so it's hindering my ability to look.
Six.
It's about what? 6.6 million, Lauren?
6.6.
Right now, based on what 5% growth.
5% growth.
See if that comes to fruition and then what you all will allow us to capture.
Oh, let me, you, you may not, and Lauren, thank, you're here, right?
Yes.
So 5% growth. 5% growth estimates how much dollars wise are we looking?
The 1%, uh, Lauren just looked at it this morning, it's 1.9 million.
1% is 1.9, so.
But remember, we're already assuming 5% in our forecast. That's already a part of your $5 million structural imbalance. So to completely resolve that imbalance, we would need roughly 8% assessed value growth, which I have no idea if that's a realistic figure. And then you would need to allow us to capture all of that to solve it simply through property taxes. Otherwise, we need to talk about reductions. And certainly that assumes not adding anything new from your decision package list. And I don't know how realistic that is.
Okay, fire away.
Say 8%. Revenue growth. Cover the structural imbalance.
Yes. Yes. I I think what we have heard from the appraiser's office to this point is it won't be less than 4.5. We have assumed 5% when we take into account state assessed utilities and some other things and maybe a little optimism.
Oh, I'll start off with just a couple of comments. I appreciate all the work that everybody did on all the briefings, uh. Some of the takeaways I have, uh, as I went through and looked at the decision packages, it looked like there's like 67 new FTEs that are in in those decision packages. And that's growing government and I'm not it and. I don't support growth in government, right? Right? It's, we need to be able to do the mission and not grow government, uh. So I've got a little problem there. Far as technology, we cannot be in the same place that City Wichita or Derby or Via Christie is in. Uh, I support anything that we can do to protect our. Technology that we have, we can't shut government down. So, uh, I know that there are things in there right now and I appreciate that, but if there's other things that we need to do. To make sure we don't end up in the same situation, uh, I, and I would know nothing else was briefed to us, but I I. I can't look at everybody and say, hey, we had something else we could have done, but we didn't because we were trying to constrain the government, the budget. Uh, I want to protect that. Um. There's a lot of equipment in the, in the budget. Uh, I want to make sure that it's equipment that's absolutely needed. Uh, for example, there's a, a vehicle in in the budget. Uh, we have a motor pool, uh. Dedicating one vehicle to one organization makes no sense to me whatsoever when we got a motor pool. Uh, so we need to look at those kinds of things that we can share between. The different agencies, and if there's a pool that we can put those things in, that's where it needs to go. We don't, uh. Go out and decide that one, one department or organization needs, uh, uh, special things that, uh, can be shared. So, uh, I'm sure I'll think of some other things. Uh, that's kind of off the top of my head. What I noticed as I was going through it. And we talked a lot about CIP the other day and I've got some concerns about the CIP, the way that it's sitting right now. Uh, I will ask the CIP to be split out. I'd hate to do that. Uh, I'd like to vote on the budget and CIP and one thing, but. If a lot of those things that are still in there that I have concerns about, I will ask for that so that I can vote against the CIP. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Lauren or Lindsay, 28.9 mils delivers, I don't have my budget book with me, sorry. How much property tax revenue today?
So our, sorry, I really wish I had my glasses. It makes it very, very hard for me to see what we're doing. We are expecting roughly. Uh.
Yes, 20, the better question is 24 budget, 28.9 mils delivered.
Well, so we have it, um, for 2024, the total levy between county and fire is 200.5 million, but I can get you a better figure.
House and fire.
Right. Let me look how much is in fire. Sorry, I don't know why I'm having such a hard time finding our information today.
Thank you, John.
Okay, move on to the next question and I'm going to look it up online.
Go ahead, Commissioner Powell.
Well, just 6.6 million times 28, 28.988 is 191 million dollars.
It does, but then we take into account tiffs to this and delinquencies. And so I was trying to get you that figure, but yes, roughly that would be what.
That's this year's 25 budget, correct?
The 6.6, what he's talking about would be the assessed value for next year's.
Yeah, I'm talking about 24. I'm trying to measure an incremental.
I'm looking at it.
Right, mill levy times that mil, dollars per mil gives you about 191 million dollars.
Twenty, 25, correct?
That's for 25.
So I want to know what 24 is to see what the incremental gain is.
Well.
Oh, I'm just, I will, since it's going to be on my screen, I can blow it up. It is for this current year, 179.7 million dollars.
179.
After delinquency, after tiffs and stuff, that's what we actually expect to collect.
Okay, so 28.9. Will deliver 11 million dollars more just property tax revenue. We're talking about any other source of revenue, just property. So 28.9 will deliver 11 million dollars more of property tax revenue. Okay.
5% gross times the 1.9 million, yes.
That's it. Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Powell.
But but that is already built into your forecast. So when we assume that, that still gives us, I I think there has been. Some confusion about that. That still gives us the structural imbalance that we see today. So.
So the the salary plans that we're discussed most recently, does that, is that, is that? The 4.6 million operational imbalance, structural imbalance. What does that assume in terms of this, the salary proposals that we've seen?
But your forecast that Lauren presented starting in February has a 5% pay pool for 2025. A 5% pay pool for 2026 and 4% pay pools in the years thereafter.
The 4.6 includes that.
Yes.
The 1% is about 1.7 million.
In property tax funds, uh, it's a little less than that. It's, yeah. In property tax supported funds only, yes. And that's what we're talking about because that's what's driven by your mill levy rate. Obviously, comm care, when you start adding in those grant funds and things, that number gets a lot bigger. But that's, that's up to the grant revenue. So we, we don't typically talk about that.
What was the forecast for sales tax? Have you given any estimates?
So we are unfortunately, um, seeing a, a major backing off of growth in sales tax, which we expected. And so, yes, that is in our forecast. And so for 2024, we're expecting two and a half percent growth. And actually, we've got it at that rate of growth into the future. And that might even be a little optimistic for this year. I think we might want to bump that down to about 2%. Just based on the fact that we've had four months of data now and there's only been one month of actual growth over last year. We are just a font of goodness.
One thing that I hadn't picked up before last year, I don't know why, but, uh. If we lower our mill levy and the other. Um, cities don't lower their mill levy, then we lose a part of our one cent sales tax.
We do, we lose a part of our sales tax and our motor vehicle tax because all of that is driven by our levy relative to others.
So. This lower in mill levy actually has a second impact on our budget, yeah, from the sales tax.
Yes. And if others aren't. Going along with us, yes, then then that equally, if that does affect us, if they were to also reduce their rates, then we would probably be held harmless.
We have to be real careful on how that we move through this. I'd love to reduce the mill levy. We have to be real careful on how that we move through this. I'd love to reduce the mill levy, but that has a double impact.
It does.
So I got a question for about making how important, when you went into the bonding discussion. It's like you're saying, putting words in your mouth, you, we need some capital improvements that can be bondable.
Yes.
Okay, with that, I, my personal feeling is we've got some real needs right around the corner. The juvenile campus is something we can discuss, but the comm care building that we bought here. So there's some things I think we could move forward on really quickly to add to your. Kind of.
And those are in the forecast.
Think we have to.
It is.
Admit to. Cause you're saying if we don't do it, then in these out years, then it'll be hard to add to it. Is that what you're saying?
Right, so, so right now, if, let's say we want to keep the mill levy rate flat. So let's say your bond and interest mill levy goes down because you have less debt service. Well, now we're gonna have that tax revenue. It's most likely gonna be consumed by operations. And so then you're going to set an expectation of that level of service delivery through those property taxes. And so down the road, when you want to issue new debt and you have to increase your property tax levy to do so, that's gonna have a real bad feel to the community. We already saw the backlash from that in two thousand eight. When the commission increased the mill levy rate for the, what was going to be a jail expansion plus AMCAT. Eventually that was rolled back, but it did cost a couple of commissioners their jobs and we don't ever want to put you in a position like that.
Are you, are you assuming that if we, if we don't add, i- if we don't add to the bond debt, that this money will automatically be absorbed in the, in the operations?
Yes, and that's.
Are you saying that because of history? Are you saying that because of lack of discipline by the commission to say, let's take that and?
I'm saying that because we, we look at all five property tax supported funds together.
Okay.
And we assume that a stable mill levy rate will be there now. Uh, it's not that I assume that you all will lack discipline, it's just we know that there's need. And we know that we already have a structural imbalance, even assuming a flat mill levy rate, even assuming some of this debt falls off. So, and that's just to continue to operate current services. So it has nothing to do with whether or not the commission has discipline or not. It has to do with just the way our forecast is set up. We look to five years in the future. We don't know what decisions are going to have. We know what history looks like and that's why we're just trying to say, if we're going to do debt funding, we want to try and, and there's an art to it to try and keep it low.
So then to piggyback on Commissioner Howe asking about the built in the forecast with the pay increase. So a five percent, that was reduced to four and a half percent, let's say. What, what would that, would that help? It would have to be, how far down on a pay increase would we have to do to make a structural balance?
Well, uh, there is, we would essentially have to get rid of the pool altogether in order to have that fix the structural imbalance of roughly five million. If we assume every additional one percent right now is one point three million.
Correct.
And you take that times five, that does significantly help, but it, it still doesn't get us where we need to be with retaining employees and, and all of that.
A one percent reduction from five to four would, would bring in another million and a half or so.
One point two, roughly.
You keep lowering it, it was.
I'm sorry, one point two in property tax month or one point three? I'm sorry, one point three. That's Lorian.
I had one point nine written down earlier.
That's the grand total of all operating funds. That's what I'm saying. We talk about what's supported by property taxes.
Okay.
That Lorian is right, it's one point three, not one point two. I was pretending it was the old days. I'm sorry.
Respecting that, you know.
I apologize for my error.
Yeah, okay. So we, we are probably challenged to look at all areas, not, not, not solve this with just a salaries or pay increase reduction. We gotta look at everything.
Well, and remember what, what Sheena showed you last week.
Right.
Um, consumes basically that five percent, especially when you start adding in your FLSA. Um, changes and things just due to fair labor standards, having to turn employees from salaried to hourly. And so, um, I, I think there would be, we would have to figure out other ways to get to those objectives if we were to cut the pay pool.
Okay.
Which is certain, I mean, that's up to the commission.
Yeah, and I would, and I would say that FLSA piece, again, that moves up the priority because we have to make those changes.
You have to do that. That's, but that was a two hundred thousand impact? What was that number?
Um.
About.
It's just under two hundred, yeah, um, for January. There's only a few positions, um, in July that will be affected that are actually filled.
Um, but again, just another curve ball that we weren't expecting that we have to address. Yeah.
Well, and then, oh, and then I'll refrain after this, but I kind of agree with the, I, I can't remember, Commissioner Dennis talked about FTEs of sixty seven. Good for you that you're keeping track of them because I, I was not. I do recall some of them thought, man, we really do need that person. So I think a reevaluation of those sixty seven by department is probably, probably worth the exercise for sure. Right, probably so. You didn't say all, right, no, I know, I know, but that was eye opening to me to think, yeah, that's, you're going.
Well, and, and there were a number of those that were also ARPA funded. And so we will have that conversation too coming up where you can decide if there is a true need to continue that position if you want to pay for it from ARPA to, to buy.
That falls in a similar thought process for me is, is safer grants, you know.
Great.
Plan, you got three years of a safer grant. What's your transition, blah, blah, blah. And I think Chief in the fire has done a nice job of evaluating that. And we all knew that ARPA was, that this was gonna be the end of the time sometime. So, um, I don't know how many of those were ARPA, of those sixty seven are ARPA related, but.
Quite a few.
Probably.
Especially within like the sheriff's office, for example, they had fifteen on that list that they were asking to bring over from ARPA, but the part of what I would point out for him is he also has committed to getting rid of detention deputy positions. Once the locks and cameras are installed in the jail. Many of these are judicial deputies. They're the ones who are moving inmates between courtrooms because now there are more courtrooms. Um, but overall, we should see, even if the commission was to approve this, we should see pretty much a, a net zero effect after a couple of years just because of that new CIP project.
Yeah, and I, I, I probably agree that, uh.
Twenty are ARPA according to Lorian, of the sixty seven, twenty are ARPA.
Twenty are ARPA.
Of the sixty seven.
And then I, I, I agree that in the CIP world, if it is CIP world, that supporting the IT infrastructure is, I think we, we benefited from supporting IT recent years is we've avoided some landmines that others have not, so. I, it's just a serious evil. I feel sorry for small businesses that do not have structural IT uh, to do that, but we've got a big operation and what are we, the eighth or ninth largest employer in the county, probably about something like that?
Probably.
Whatever the business journal said, so, I mean, we do have a responsibility for secure IT.
Well, and we take in all the property taxes for the entire community. So yes, we have a lot of, a lot of responsibility.
Well, that echoes why I think, uh, continued awareness, I, unless Mike says differently, I think that the vulnerability is, the biggest vulnerability is an employee hitting something. Is that, is that still true? So, uh, we, we have to focus, if they like it or not, we have to focus on educating the employees, continue. So.
Talking twenty five, talking structural imbalance, I'm aware, but in your forecast or in your thinking, where has ARPA replacement dollars leveled into that? I know we still have a structural imbalance, I understand it, but.
So, um, it, we haven't taken any of that into account in the forecast yet because we needed to get some direction from you all. I, one of the things we talked about on Friday with CIP was that EMS post one. Um, you saw that that is contemplated in our future bond and interest. Um, I think you're going to see that that comes to you as a CIP admin this year, and that would be one of the very first things I would recommend you use revenue replacement for. That alone will have a slight, not a huge, but it will have an impact on the forecast positively because that will be recurring costs that we don't have to pay. I think part of what we have to get into though is, um, that big dollar discussion. Uh, and I'm sorry that Tanya is not here, but on the, uh, what we talked about for the jail and for the main courthouse and roughing building and all of those controls that we have to do, it's got that eleven million dollar price tag. Uh, unfortunately, I think that would be a strong competitor for our revenue replacement dollars and that doesn't do much to help us with our bond and interest in the long term, but it does reduce otherwise cash that you're gonna have to come up with in short order. So I think we need to do a deeper dive on that. I think because just between those two things, that's fourteen million of the potentially seventeen and a half million. We're talking about ARPA revenue replacement and then the rest we can put toward comm care crisis, we can put toward an admin building, we can put toward whatever it is that the commission would like, but it's not gonna have as much of an impact.
Pause one second. Tom, can you or somebody give us some information on that eleven million dollar, like, we kind of just breezed it, but.
And Andrew's gonna do a tour for you guys too, I think, so you can kind of see what all we're talking about. He did value engineer the twenty twenty five figures, those twenty twenty six and twenty twenty seven figures had not had the, he hasn't had the time to do the certain level scrutiny on those. But overall, it's still gonna be a very expensive project.
Um, EMS fees is another one. Um, that's obviously a decision package, so that was not calculated into.
Right, that would be additional, what, one point two million roughly?
Okay, I'm just trying to look at deficit, so, okay.
But again, for, for what's generated for EMS, that goes to primarily EMS services. And so we would need to kind of keep that in mind to try and keep those matched.
I know you keep talking about structural imbalance and what that means is operations is costing more than revenue.
Right.
Over time. But I want to just go back and think for just a few minutes here. So we have capital, pre-capital campaigns I'm aware of, but off the top of my head, TCAM, what are we spending towards TCAM right now?
So they get a hundred seventy six thousand in direct allocation each year. Plus we have the building maintenance costs, which I believe the last time Tanya looked was around twenty five to thirty thousand per year. Plus we've got the ninety thousand capital contribution that we committed to a five year spread on.
That's ninety, ninety thousand per year.
Yes.
And we, uh, we also got involved two and a half million also EP for their, their capital campaign.
Correct.
And two million for CAC. Am I missing anything there?
No.
Those added to more than four point six million. So my point is, I know that's one time spending, but we seem, we seem to get ourselves involved in some of these challenges. We make, we make decisions to spend money we didn't have to spend. That makes this much more difficult. And those decisions come to us every year or so. We, a few years ago, we, we did six million to the zoo. And again, I, I know they, they, they needed the money, I get that. We actually committed, I think, to a larger number for their master plan. I think there was a, a secondary.
I'm not aware of, of a, a.
There's six million dollars at least for that.
Yes, for the admin building over three years. But I will say, Commissioner, at the time that you all approved those things, we hadn't had the conversation about the sheriff's compensation yet. And remember, that's more than five million alone per year that we did not, and, and, and I'm not arguing with you, I agree, you know, I am. I don't like to pay those things. Um, but I also understand from a commissioner perspective why those might be priorities. But that said, this structural imbalance came about after January. It was part of what we talked about that day. We knew something like this would be coming and we knew that it was kind of the tip of the iceberg. Um, because we knew that this would have ripple effects across the organization. So, um, I think at the time the commission made decisions, we were in a different financial position than we're at and than we're at today.
I don't disagree. Um, and, and by the way, I, I do disagree with you on this idea that we would, we would increase our operational spending if we didn't have more debt. I think that that is, um, I don't think that's what I would be willing to support. I do think there's, there's things coming at us that we need to be planning for. For example, we know the election equipment is gonna hit the end of year, you know, end of life in about three years or so. You know, our, our previous example was we put back money for a number of years.
Right.
Election office was another great thing. We put back three million dollars and sat on that, about three million dollars for a number of years looking for the right space.
Well, and remember last year, you all authorized three million dollars to go into the equipment reserve fund because of the one time investment income. So we are already trying to, to take proactive measure.
But that's judicious, right? That's, that's a good way to handle some of these things rather than debt. So a- again, if we recognize needs coming across the horizon to save up money before you spend the money, is that another way of handling that without just putting money back into operation? So I, I, I think we, I, I think we're smarter than that. We would not necessarily just grow the budget. Let me just remind us, you know, last time the county got into a pickle on, and by, by the way, when, when I first got here, we were, we were financially upside down. And that was a, that was not a fun year. Okay, we had to do some cuts. Y'all remember quit the cuts campaign, that was not fun. But even before I got here, I feel sorry for commissioners who were here prior to when I was here, but they froze FTE growth. There was no, but nobody being added to the organization anywhere. That was frozen. They, uh, laid off some people. There was people, there were actually, it was attrition, there was reductions in staff. They froze salary increases, they froze the salary increases. And there was cross the board cuts in spending, mandatory spending in your department. You had this, you had to cut, you had to find a way in your department to cut five percent. And that was just given out to directors and managers to say, figure it out. And guess what? They balanced the budget. I don't like to have to talk that way, but at the end of the day, that's the kind of thing that's coming at us. We don't deal with this four point six million dollars. Those are decisions we have to make, yes, ma'am.
Be fair though, at that point in time, we thought we were going to be insolvent within a five year timeframe. And so there was actually a three year initiative to try and, and cut twenty million dollars in recurring expenses from the budget at that point in time. And you're right, we did cut a hundred and twenty FTEs and we went through a special voluntary retirement program and we, we did freeze pay and we did six point six percent across the board cuts for non-public safety departments and three point three percent for public safety departments plus a hold on CIP. I mean, you're right, we had major, major issues and there were a lot of hard decisions at that time. And I would take comfort in the fact, I guess, that we're looking at a structural imbalance of five million dollars, but not anticipating insolvency anytime soon.
Well, there's one way to get around the problem. We can kick the can down the road by using what David Dennis campaigned against. I know that this, we all, we all think this is a horrible term and I agree, it's a horrible term, but deficit spending. We have any balance to kick this can down the road for a year or two, but we have to solve the problem. And maybe the economy will, will solve itself in time. You'll kick the can down the road and maybe in a year or two, things get better. Don't know. But right now, the, the salary pro- proposals we've seen, in my, my, my opinion, depend on assess, assess value growth, where frankly, I'm uncomfortable with. I don't, I don't like those numbers, a five percent or higher. The state's talking about cutting us to four percent growth. I mean, I think that's coming back. So, the end of the day, you know, the idea of balancing the budget, how hard that, how hard that will be, there are places we can cut. It's not gonna be fun. But there are places we can cut. There's things we can do to, to find efficiencies. I, I, I have a few of those I'll share with a manager at some point, but this idea that we have, that we have to have more debt, I don't know that I agree with that. I know, although I agree that we have to support the sixty seven FTEs or that we have to that we have to support that salary plan. It's a great plan. And I love the fact we have employees that are happy with their salary today, or happier than they have been in the past. But then at the end of the day, we owe it to the taxpayers to find a way to solve this problem without a tax increase. And I, if, if we have to make hard decisions, I'm willing to make hard decisions. Back to the comment you made earlier, uh, manager's tools. I do think we need to put together and to do Chairman Beatty's, uh, discussion with the Onbok meeting we had with Wichita. I think they should peel off the discretionary spending that Wichita has and the discretionary spend that we have in our budget and send that to the taxpayers for a, a sales tax proposal. But what that means, if it doesn't pass, then those things will be cut from the budget. I, I would like to put it back on the voters to say, do you want to fund these things or not? Yes or no? If they don't pass, then the reality is our budget doesn't have to deal with those any longer. We're going to consider those discretionary items are no longer, no longer part of our budget. And I think that it's a hard, it's a hard vote for the people, but they belong a lot better under sales tax than they do our property tax. It's property tax, in my opinion, is for core functions of government. And I can define what that means. Public safety infrastructure are the top two. Administration is, you know, it has to have the human resources and purchasing and finance and a lot of things we have to do. But, um, there's things that, in my opinion, there, there, we feel like they're so important to our budget, we're unwilling to solve these problems. At the end of the day, they really don't belong in property tax funds. They really should be sourced through sales tax. And if we have to go, if we could pass a resolution amongst ourselves and make that happen, that's great, but I, I would rather see the people vote for it and lock us in. Cause we don't, we don't debate fifty percent of the sales tax going to infrastructure. We don't debate that, it just goes there. We don't debate one point five million, sorry, one point five mils going to WSU because it's, it is required by law. That's what has to happen. We don't debate that much. Uh, but everything else is just. But everything else is discretionary. We sit there and we debate year after year after year. And the end of the day, if you hand this over to the voters and say, if you vote yes, these things get funded. If you vote no, you, you chose not to fund them. And actually, I would actually potentially add in there some social programs like our homeless challenges, our mental health. You know, we, we have plans to increase spending in mental health, homelessness and, and substance abuse. Uh, areas of services. And I would add some of that in there so that again, if the people vote for it, then they, they have a funding stream that's dedicated to those things. If they don't vote for it, then that tells us they would rather, they would rather have us not solve those problems and solve them some other way in the private sector perhaps. But they're not considering a government responsibility at that point. So anyway, I, I just think we need to, we need to put together a package of proposal for the, for, for the voters to consider that leans up our budget does and it gets it back on core, core functions. I don't, I don't know that I agree with the, seems like a very long list of things that are discretionary that are in our budget that we don't actually have to do. I, I love project access. I love the CAC, but those are discretionary things. We don't have to do those. So I could go on. There's so many things like that. And we don't have to spend money on those things. We choose to. We still have in our, in our thing, Central County Fair. That's a great thing to do. We don't have to do that. I can go on. There's lots more, but I, I think, I think we've talked and talked and talked about the sales tax idea. We don't seem to move forward. I don't know what, what's going to take to get us to get there. But if we have to solve a four point six million dollar imbalance, I think that's, as, as hard as that sounds, there's places to cut four point six million. It's not going to be fun, but we can do it.
Well, Commissioner Hell made me surprised, but I agree with him. We're, we're going to have to make some hard discussions. Uh, we've got one thing I think is going to be on our next, uh, agenda to look at things that people come in and ask for money all the time. And I think we need to stop that completely. I am ready to vote on, uh, there's two options that will show up in our, uh, agenda. Uh, one is to put together something, or manager doesn't like to call it, but it's a slush fund. And so I'll continue to call it that. But, uh, and I completely disagree that we have a slush fund that we give money away. Then we're picking winners and losers. So, uh, the other option is to cut those off. And that's the option we have to be in when we're in, in a, a deficit situation looking towards the future. We have probably fifteen different organizations that we give money to automatically each year. And we're going to have to look at cuts on every single one of them. I hate to say that, but, uh, I don't want to eliminate any of them. I'd hate to do that all at once. Maybe in the future it'll have to be eliminated some of those. Uh, but I think that there is a percentage cut that we're going to have to go across the board on all of those, uh, different organizations because we've got to get to the point where that we've got a balanced budget without raising the property tax.
I'd go back just real quick on Commissioner How's comment on the, on the sales tax issue that we seem to be stuck. To me, that's a fairly significant shift in government management. And I think if we're going to shift government management to people ought to be consulted. I think that the blue ribbon committee that we talked about with the merit Ombok is a step forward in that. We have not had a chance to meet yet to determine that, but I think you have to have a group of citizens. Call them what you want, uh, Blue Ribbon Committee or a, um, executive committee that has to tackle this and determine if it's a way forward for the community. And it is clearly transparent, has to be talked about in, in both governments, city and county, or cities and county. Uh, and we, and we talked about this. Um, I think that's the way forward on that particular item and it's, it's a big enough shift that I think we have to make that table really big to have that discussion. And I hear you on the rest. Um, well, I think it's going to be not one thing or the other. It's going to be a combination of things that we're going to come, come through as a staff and try to figure out. We need, we need to listen to the community the next couple of weeks. Uh, and at the, at our hearings to see what, what their will is. And then we will, it'll be a combination of things we'll bring forward to, to bring a balanced budget in.
Could we at least get from Wichita kind of a, a report on what do they spend on cultural recreation that is discretionary things? And I would add in there, there may some, be some things, I, I don't know if y'all consider it, for example, for our side extension office, is that a, is that discretionary or is that, I don't know. I'm not so sure. But anyway, there's some things in there that may not be, you know, simply arts and parks. It might be, you know, important, uh, project access may be a good example. But it'd be nice to say, you know, what's their list of discretionary spending that we, we believe that people tend to support these things, uh, you know, on their list, I assume Cowtown and Botanica and Art Museum and and all the, only the American Indians that are, and maybe a few other things, uh, on their list. But add that up, what's it come to? And then add ours up and see if we were to find a, a joint funding stream that deals with all that stuff for city and county. And then I would suggest if, if it's sales tax based, the once the money goes in there, it's locked in. There ought to be some type of a joint advisory panel that helps us figure out how to prioritize the funds within the zero sum game of dollars. And they would make recommendations to the elected bodies to, to adopt, if you will, the recommendations potentially. But to me, that is a way to, to get this off our, our budget and hand it back over to sales tax where it belongs. When the, when the economy thrives, people spend money and that, that money generates revenue that goes back into these types of things that they get to enjoy. It's, it's dealing with the issues that they really support, um, with discretionary spending on their, on their own personal decisions. And, and then I think that property tax, which is the most stable fund of all, um, is reserved for things like streets and public safety. That just, to me, that's the, that's the better form of government. To fund those cultural and recreational things with property taxes, it violates a principle. I, I was thinking about that little old lady. I had two little ladies in one block. I knocked doors last time I ran for office. Knock on the door and, and she was crying at the door. When are you going to stop raising my taxes? I'm going to fix it. My, my husband died twenty years ago. I, I only get social security. I can't afford to buy my food. I was, I had to apologize to her. And right down the block, the very same conversation happened a second time. I know exactly where that was in my community. I'd go back to that block again and see if they're still around, but that made, made, that made a, that scarred me, so to speak, that we're taxing people for quality of life stuff that again, that's one way to run government. But at the end of the day, these two little ladies were trying to find food. They are not interested in subsidizing people's entertainment. Or, or, you know, what we call quality of life things. They don't want to see them subsidize those things and reduce the cost for someone to go to enjoy themselves when they can't afford to go buy food. And I told them, I said, well, if we use your tax dollars or, you know, it's, it's a fair assessment and it goes to pay for infrastructure like, you know, ambulances and nine one one and sheriff's office in the jail on the streets. Do you support that? They'll say yes. They'll say, do you support this other list of things that are discretionary spending? I, it gets, I'm uncomfortable even asking the question. Sales tax belongs on that type of stuff. To use property taxes for things that are not core functions of central county government, in my opinion, is, is offensive. It's immoral. It's wrong. I, I think we have to make a choice to get the sales tax revenue to support those things that are discretionary spending on our part. So the people, when they spend money, they support those things themselves. We've got to make a change here. And I, I've, I've been, I've been talking about this now for a decade. This is not a new conversation for me. But I, year after year after year, I, I'm frustrated with, because I feel like we have no choices. We're spending money on things that frankly are not core functions. Out of property taxes. I, I think we have to have this conversation and answer, we've got to mature this conversation to actually get something in front of the people. It may not be more taxes to them at the end of the day, but at least they have a choice on whether they spend money on those things or not. Plus we also have the poll, the poll factor, people from outside the community spending money to support the things like Central County Zoo. I, I just think it's a better way to run government. We have got to mature the conversation. Thanks.
I think City Wichita, don't they dedicate one mill to arts?
Yes.
And so I, I guess I'd like to know what they're putting their one mill towards that we're also putting money towards because now we're double taxing our taxpayers. So if, if there are things that City Wichita is funding and we're trying to fund it also, uh, maybe that's a wrong approach because those same taxpayers are now paying for it twice.
I second these motions.
I, listening to all this, I, you know, when, when we say we have been talking about a sales tax, I'm, I'm not part of the we. You should say some of us have been talking about this for a long time. I've been reluctant to talk much about it because went through this when, i- if we're going to do a sales tax deal, I will only consider it if the people promoting to have it have a defined plan. Because when we went through that in twenty fourteen at the city, we said, we just need some money. It, it'll, no, so, and, and I don't, I don't want to be on the committee that defines exactly how it's spent. So I appreciate your intensity and your passion. So either I like Tom's approach. It says we ought to engage some pretty good high level citizens to say, well, to, to consider this, uh, it, it with city and county. I know countywide, but, uh, I, I'm, I'm very hesitant to, uh, I don't want to be part of crafting it from, from the bench, say, this is what a sales tax would go for. I think that'd be highly criticized because everybody's going to have an opinion on it and it, it, it's very difficult. But I respect what you're saying. It's incredibly difficult to run.
All due respect. I appreciate your comments, but let me, let me couch this. I'm not asking for tax increase. I'm asking for just shifting to tax revenue.
I know.
So, you know, what I'm saying is the, the things were already in our budget. The things were already funded. We made political decisions for as elected officials to fund our budget, shift the revenue from us making that decision to the people making that decision. The stuff's already being funded. To shift the source, and I'm not suggesting we add any spending. I'm simply saying, get rid of the property tax and move it to sales tax. Again, ask the people, do you support this? Yes or no? If they say no, it gives us some cover. It says, well, we're going to cut this out of the budget now. Because I'm going to lower property taxes. I'm, I'm committed to lowering property taxes. We're going to shift three mills out of our budget. Okay. Get three, and I mean three mills. Get three mills out of our budget. Hopefully Wichita will lower theirs by three. That's seven mills property tax reduction between City Wichita and Central County. But to do that, you need a third of a cent sales tax dedicated to cover these things. And these are the things that are already in our budgets. Something says, these are going to be funded through sales tax. If you vote yes, if you vote no, they're not going to get funded at all. They're gone. We're not going to fund that through our budget, through property taxes forever. We're not, we're, we're, we're backing away from property taxes to fund these things. The only way they're going to get funding is if you vote yes. So if you want them, vote yes. If you don't want them, you want, don't want these to get funded through sales tax, vote no, and they will be defunded. That's what I'm talking about. I, I think we have to shift the revenue from property tax to sales tax. And what, we have to be serious. I want to, I want us to lower our budget by three mills. That's reasonable. And we could do that if we simply would shift the revenue for those things to sales tax. And again, it should be a fixed amount. It's around a third of a, a third of a cent, third, a, a third of a percent, as you say, maybe half percent. When Wichita and Central County though, to go to dedicate to all those types of, all that things would be, we know exactly what they are. They're already in the budget. You shift them over to that other source of revenue and lower the mill levy. That's what I'm talking about. I don't want to solve it here. I'm only one vote. I'm only one opinion. And to say, we've been talking about it. I've been talking about this with commissioners and staff for more, more than about a decade now. So it's not a new conversation for, for me anyway. Anyway, I'm committed to making some significant changes in how we fund government.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah. Okay. Tom, anything else?
It'll be fine.
Okay. I think we're good on our end.
Okay. See ya.